For the benefit of the record, this regular meeting of the Orange County Board of Education is called to order. Darrell Roehckel.
Trustee Valdez.
Present.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Sparks.
Here.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Barki.
Here.
I would ask for the adoption of the regular meeting of December 14, 2022.
So moved?
Second. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, four to zero. And now the approval of the regular meeting of November 2, 2022.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero. And now, Naina, do we have any comment cards received for our closed session items?
You do not.
Okay. So now we will take a recess to go into closed session and be back at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We're going to roll over our closed session until after the meeting because we have a few items that we still need to discuss. Moving right along, we'll start with our invocation, Pastor Christina Williams. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. For unto us a child is born, a son is given, the government will rest on his shoulders, and he will be called Wonderful Counselor Mighty God Everlasting Father Prince of Peace. Lord, at this festive time, we pray that you would be with us in all that we do and all that we plan. And today, we particularly ask you to bless this meeting and those who will participate in it. We pray that your love will shine during this time and that we will reflect you in all our actions, attitudes, and behaviors during this meeting. Help us to remember that you are the God who sees in secret and rewards openly, that you care deeply on how we live and respond in the places of leadership that you put us in. We ask that you would bless this group abundantly and that they may seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in deliberations and help them to be wise in the decisions that they make for the protection and good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help them to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard them from anything destructive. Lord, grant us humility in all we seek your will, that we want to do what you would have us do and say. That is why we labor and strive, because we have put our hope in the living God who is the Savior of all people. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Christina Williams, from the Harbor Light Church of Costa Mesa. We appreciate you being here tonight. Next, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance. Henny Abraham, come on up.
Please rise. If you knew how important this is to me, I wasn't born in America to stand in front of you, and as a free American woman, whose country right now is fighting for its revolution, I'm Iranian. This is a great honor and privilege. So for the fact that we live in the best country and a free country, please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Henny. Naina, do we have any introductions?
Excuse me, there are no introductions at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we can approve, excuse me, the consent calendar. Items 1 through 3, unless you want to tease one out?
Yep. Did you, are you moving that?
I'm moving that, or well, you can move it.
I'll move it, go ahead, so move.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, 1 through 3?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 4 to 0.
You skipped over public comments.
Oh, and I forgot public comments, I sure did. Okay.
So.
Sorry about that.
No worries, we have a number of you, so I will call a name followed by the backup speaker, so you can be ready to go on deck. We will first.
General comment, I'm sorry. We can't hear a few more.
Oh, more are coming. Okay, so we're going to start with Lynn, followed by Shereen.
Just as the TV anchor proclaimed in network, I'm mad as hell and I'm not taking it anymore. I am enraged with trustee Williams' policy 404. I'm equally disdainful, as was the Orange County Register's November 17th editorial, with each of you for permitting this vile dictatorial policy to remain pending as if it had any socially redeeming feature worthy of your consideration. No wordsmithing can fix the arrogance and cruelty of this policy. I insist that 404 be buried and that no other such embarrassingly written, factually vacuous policy ever be placed before we, the public, again. I fully embrace every word in the Register's November 17th editorial. It absolutely exposed not only Williams' mock-worthy 404 curriculum proposal, but it likewise nailed the complicity of this entire board, expressly calling it and calling you silly, addicted to culture war spats and preening for Fox News, and then summarizing the board's consistent conduct as political theater. Wow, that has to burn. Most powerful was the editorial's calling out the board, and I quote, "for its abuse of power, your Fox preening of exaggerated, totally fictitional jurisdiction. The board's authority," said the register, "and I quote, "is limited to special education and alternative schools. It cannot dictate policy for the districts." And I add my own legal view, that neither can this board dictate policy or curriculum to our charter schools. So bury 404, and above all, stop using our county Board of Education as a platform, as the register rightly said, for you conservative board members to impose your political views on our kids. I'm Lynn Riddle, I'm a resident of the county of Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go to Shereen, followed by Nancy.
Good evening, President Sparks and members of the board. Big Brother is a term from the novel 1984 by George Orwell that functions as a synonym for abuse of government power, especially related to civil liberties. Last month, board member Ken Williams brought forth proposed board policy 404 that includes a 14-point list of forbidden, quote, "indoctrination" topics. As stated in the November 18th Orange County Register editorial entitled, "Orange County Board of Education Addicted to Silly Culture War Spats," this policy is little more than political theater and casts a big brotherish pall over any potentially controversial topic. The register goes on to say, quote, "This proposal isn't really an effort to stop teachers from promoting liberal political views, but a means for a conservative board member to impose his political views on kids. Your proposed policy creates the misconception that we are teaching communism and Marxism in our schools. It is a fear-based document based on the assumption that our hardworking teachers and administrators and the school communities that support and guide them are not to be trusted with teaching and learning. I worked in our public schools for more than 30 years as a teacher, a middle school principal, a high school principal, and superintendent. Not once did I, or any teacher that worked for me, advocate or teach communism, Marxism, or Stalinism with the intent to indoctrinate or to inculcate in any pupil a preference for same as prohibited by this proposed policy, which is already prohibited by the California Education Code. Your policy is a straw man. I strongly encourage you to stop the culture war nonsense and drop any further pursuit of this policy. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
Nancy will be followed by Dori.
Good evening. Political theater, culture war spats, these were the terms that were used in the Orange County Register editorial to denounce the introduction of proposed policy 404. The OC Register editorial staff, who endorsed many of the trustees on this board in past elections, made it clear in their editorial that they believe the Orange County Board of Education should focus on relevant educational issues instead of preening for Fox News. That's a direct quote from the editorial. The Orange County Register article demonstrates that the Orange County Board of Ed is losing support, and past supporters are now ridiculing the board. Proposed policy 404 was brought as an action item in October and an information item in November, and it's now tabled to a future agenda. To summarize again why this is poor policy, here are a few key points. Proposed policy 404 allows the school board to become the censor of classroom discussion that touches on history of current affairs. That's from the Orange County Register. There's no rationale for this resolution based on truth or facts or what's happening in the schools. This policy isn't necessary nor helpful. Proposed policy 404 is politicized propaganda that demonstrates a complete lack of understanding about education in general and the meaning of quality education for all students in Orange County. This proposed policy should not move forward in any form. I hope you will abandon this reckless policy and focus more on supporting quality education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will hear from Dori, followed by Nomi.
Good evening, trustees and members of the audience, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dori Krepin, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I'm here to speak against the shameful proposal 404. At the last meeting, an overwhelmingly number of people spoke against this proposal and its censorship of teachers' free speech. After the meeting, the Orange County Register, a conservative newspaper that has been a supporter of the board, had this to say in its editorial, quote, "Trustee Ken Williams' proposed policy is little more than political theater. It bans topic categories and hobbles the ability of teachers to have serious discussion about civil rights, race, and gender. This is a means for a conservative board member to impose his politics and views on kids," end of quote. The register got it right. What is this policy based on? There's no evidence to support it. It's a modern-day witch hunt, a revival of McCarthyism, complete with censorship. And sadly, what does it create? Fear. Teachers fearing that what they discuss in their classroom and how they choose their words, and parents fearing their children are being indoctrinated with false narratives on history and current affairs. You see, fear is a powerful emotion. It makes people afraid, and when cultivated, it can lead to hatred, violence, and the harming of people. We witness today a surge of hate groups and unsolicited violence against minorities. You, the board, need to stop the censorship of teachers with this harmful proposal. It's time for the board to create an atmosphere of respect and trust for our teachers. Be accountable for your decisions. Vote your conscience. Do the right thing. Vote it out. Don't let one trustee mislead you. Don't behave like a herd of sheep, unashamed, following one person and rubber stamping an ill-founded proposal that creates nothing but fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nomi will be followed by Michael.
Forgive me if I'm not doing justice to your name.
That's okay, you're doing great justice to my name. I'm here with my colleague Katie, so we were just figuring out who was going to speak. My name is Nomi Abadi, and I am here to support the comments of my colleague Katie Bullinger. We are both alumni from the Orange County School of the Arts. Thank you.
As Nomi said, I'm Katie Bullinger, an alumna of Orange County School of the Arts, with my fellow alumna, Nomi Abadi. Thank you for your time. I'm sure that you have seen the press reports about the lawsuits and allegations regarding the decades-long history of sexual abuse at Orange County School of the Arts. Some of the faculty and administrators who are named in the press or in the lawsuits are still holding positions of authority at OSHA today. We're here to ask you, the Orange County Board of Education, under your authority as the organization that holds OSHA's charter, to launch an independent formal investigation into the reports of sexual abuse of students by faculty and staff at OSHA that goes back decades. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
You're, so you're Katie?
I'm Katie.
So, okay, you had yourself checked as speaking on item number five, so that's why I'd set you aside.
Oh, no, that's what he had told us, not realizing that we weren't for that charter school.
No worries, okay. So, thank you for that clarification.
Of course, of course. No, thank you so much.
You can't ask questions.
Yeah, it's okay. We will hear from, thank you. Michael will be followed by Peter.
Thank you. My name is Michael Rosen. I'm on the board of the Anti-Defamation League in Orange County, Long Beach. I'm actually the regional board chair of ADL in Orange County, and I'm opposed to proposed policy 404. The ADL was formed and founded in 1913 in response to an escalating climate of antisemitism and bigotry. We are a leading anti-hate organization with the mission to protect the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment for all. We are a leading provider of anti-bias education and an advocate for Holocaust education. ADL is deeply concerned about 404. We strongly believe that learning about the Holocaust and its lessons of antisemitism and racism is one of the best ways to fight prejudice and discrimination, and such learning contributes to healthy school climates where all students in their rich and varied diversity know and feel they belong. Under policy 404, teachers would be prohibited from using curriculum that advanced the idea that an individual is inherently morally or otherwise too superior to another individual. And the Nazis felt that they were superior, so this policy would ban teaching about Nazis or white supremacy. Under policy 404, teachers would be prohibited from teaching that an individual, whether consciously or unconsciously, by virtue of his or her ethnicity, skin color, race, sex, or gender identity, is inherently racist, sexist, or otherwise biased against another individual. ADL is an expert in anti-bias education, and we believe this misrepresents what biases are and how biases are formed. Additionally, this policy neglects the potential negative impact on students when unhealthy biases go unchecked. And ultimately, this policy would ban any education revenue of this. Together, these referred reference prohibitions effectively create a heckler's veto effectively create a heckler's veto of essential education in our public schools. For these reasons, I'm opposed to the proposed policy.
Thank you.
Peter will be followed by Joyce.
So I'm Peter Levy. I'm the regional director for the Anti-Defamation League, and I'm going to pick up where my board chair left off about how this creates a de facto of heckler's veto of important and essential education. For example, any legitimate Holocaust curriculum or educational program must necessarily condemn the antisemitic and racist ideology of Nazis, as well as Holocaust denial. And as a leading authority on extremism, terrorism, and hate, both foreign and domestic, ADL also notes that today's white supremacists and neo-Nazis are veritably antisemitic, racist, xenophobic, misogynistic, and homophobic. Thus, any student or employee who is white and holds these odious beliefs, whether or not affiliated with an extremist group, could claim that Holocaust education programs violate Policy 400-4 because it makes them feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or other psychological distress because of their white race. And this concern is not hypothetical. Only two years ago, there was a disturbing issue at a South Florida public high school where parents who do not believe the Holocaust occurred impacted the school's delivery of state-mandated Holocaust education. Let's not set that groundwork that happened here in Orange County. Additionally, Policy 400-4 would prohibit instruction that, quote, "cultural, social, political divisive statements about citizens or students' social status based on ethnicity, skin color, race, sex, or gender identity." Right? How does the school board plan to define cultural, social, politically divisive statements? The vague and subjective nature of this policy leaves it open to expanded interpretations that will undoubtedly result in harmful unintended consequences. From ADL's long and deep experience in this type of education, in bias, and in bullying prevention, we firmly believe that Policy 400-4, with its provisions to address these issues of ethnicity, skin color, race, sex, or gender identity, will silence and eliminate any efforts to create inclusive environments for students in marginalized groups based precisely on those qualities of ethnicity, skin color, race, sex, or gender identity. And it'll actively send a message that these students do not have and are not welcome and included in their schools. At a time of rising hate incidents in K-12 schools, the need to teach the universal lessons of the Holocaust, the consequences of bigotry and hate, is desperately needed. And for these reasons, I too oppose Policy 400-4 and strongly urge that neither that policy or anything similar be brought forward to this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce will be followed by Sean.
Thank you for giving us the chance to comment, and I apologize for my sinuses condition.
Can you lower the mic, Joyce? Thank you.
I'm Joyce McNabb of Costa Mesa, known as grandma to three Estancia High School graduates who have gone on to UC Davis, San Diego State, and UCLA. My own alma mater is the first of our country's land-grant colleges. And to paraphrase Abraham Lincoln, "All that I am or hope to be, I owe to Michigan State University." It's no wonder that I believe in public education as the foundation of our democracy. My concern this evening is with the proposed Orange County Board Policy 400-4. On November 17th, the editorial board of the Orange County Register published its condemnation of the proposal, saying it would, quote, "hobble the ability of teachers to have serious discussions about civil rights, race, and gender." They go on to say, "If it passes, the board would ultimately become the censor of any classroom discussion that touches on history or current affairs." So censorship. And as the register goes on, "Big brotherism and abuse of power." I've no idea what percentage of Orange County voters differentiate between the county Board of Education and the county's Department of Education. But I fear that the board's proposed policy would, in the minds of many, tarnish the Department of Education's reputation for excellence. And so I urge you to, once and for all, stop any action on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean will be followed by Beck.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sean Drexler. I'm from Costa Mesa, still living here. And yeah, I love everyone's comments, and I thank you all so much. Yeah, I think history is so important, and that history be taught, like, with a full account of all the things that have happened. I was looking through the proposal. I thought it was really ironic how it talks about, like, how freedom of speech and stuff is something that should be valued in education. And then it's like, but you can't talk about these things, you know, because it might make some people uncomfortable. So I thought that was pretty, pretty bad. And then, speaking of history, colleagues, some colleagues of mine, C.J. Atkins and Eric Gordon, wrote some things that I thought were some pretty interesting comparisons, things leading up in, uh, leading into the 1930s Germany. Germany was actually at the forefront of research into sexuality and gender and things like that. As some may be aware here, the first, the book burnings were largely books on gender theory and gender studies. So there is often this, we often see this in history, these cycles of progress and then these pushbacks of reaction. And I think we are seeing that now. Some specifics on that. In 1897, German scientist Magnus Hirschfeld and some of his comrades in the Social Democratic Party of Germany founded the Scientific Humanitarian Committee in Berlin, the world's very first organization that advocated for both homosexual and what would become known as transgender rights. The committee's first act was to push for repeal of paragraph 175, which criminalized homosexuality. Hirschfeld would later go on to found the World League for Sexual Reform, targeted by the Nazis for being a Jew, a socialist, and a sex researcher. Hirschfeld had to go into exile in France in 1933, where he died in 1935. The extensive archives and library of his Institute for Sexology in Berlin were burned by the Nazis, a loss still felt. This is reputed to be the first of the Nazis' famous public book burnings, a model for all the later ones, not only in fascist Germany, but anywhere a regime wants to suppress knowledge. We've seen that in the U.S., and we're seeing it today. And then last, I would just like to point out, I was recently reading this book called Labor's Untold Story or History. It's put out by the UE, the United Electrical Union. And they talk about how the abolitionists even were accused of being like communist and socialist insurrectionists, and that that was the goal, you know, of them trying to, like, end slavery. So, yeah, all the references to, like, communism and Stalinism and stuff in the proposal, like, those are often, like, the first signs of a right-wing push against progressive rights. Is that the end of my time, or am I close?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Beck will be followed by Chelsea.
Hello, my name is Beck. My pronouns are they/them/thers, and I am the system change advocate for the Dale McCattosh Center for the Disabled. I would like to speak against the Policy Number 400-4 limiting education regarding race, ethnicity, gender identity, and sexual orientation. I won't belabor the points made by my colleagues. I will, however, encourage the education of other intersectional topics, such as disability history, a worthy history that, a worthy topic that has yet to have its day in U.S. history lessons. Please do not censor teachers. Please do not support Policy 404.
Thank you.
Chelsea will be followed by David.
Hi, I'm Chelsea. I didn't know I was going to be speaking tonight. I'm kind of a guest, a guest in this room, and I'm here to listen and observe. I, um, I would say that I come from kind of a background where I've had a diverse education. I've been in multiple states, multiple places. And education is something that's really important to me. And I was interested, kind of, in the discussion of censorship that we're going to be talking about tonight, kind of. So I just kind of want to see how it goes and see what everyone has to bring to the table and talk about. I think it's incredibly important to spend time in other people's space. That includes reading in different subject matter and different, you know, people's life experiences. I think that just makes people more well-rounded and able to converse with other people in this place, you know, where we live and are with each other. So thank you for having me, and I'm going to just sit back down and listen and observe. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, followed by Riley.
All right, hello. I have to just echo the sentiments that were shared by others up here against a proposed policy. I don't want to retread that same ground, so I just want to note a few things. I do agree with what Sean said earlier. This represents a reactionary push. This is a backwards push, anti-factual push. And just note a few, a few things. They talk about, in the beginning of the document, communism and its totalitarian nature. This sort of anti-fact approach is kind of blatant and offensive in light of some, you know, recent facts. So I just, again, I didn't prepare a speech like some of my friends here, and they were quite excellent, so I'm just going to share some things off the cup. But over the last two years, through this pandemic, the United States uniquely suffered in terms of its caseload and death in proportion to its population, 4% of the world's population, 15% of the world's cases, and 16% of the world's deaths. I share this because, you know, we often hear, say, China, talk of China and its handling of the COVID-19 pandemic. We know we're trying to scaremonger these, you know, communist socialist regimes, but they have quite low case rate compared to the United States, 0.2% of the world's COVID cases and 0.08% of the world's deaths. If you're wondering why I'm bringing up COVID, it's just to illustrate this kind of scaremongering, backwards approach, an anti-factual approach. If we're afraid to teach facts, you know, and you're censoring on that basis, it's, you're teaching an anti-factual kind of approach. And I cannot endorse that, I can't stand by it, which is why I'm here. Another thing, when it comes to gender-based oppression, we want to ignore socialist states like Cuba that are passing extremely progressive policy, the Family Code Act, for example. Again, in the United States, you know, there's a lot of celebration in this proposed policy, you know, the mandating of the pledge and things like this. We had a pledge at the beginning. And yet, the United States blocks a lifesaving medication. Let me see if I get the, yes. So when it comes to diabetes, preventable disease in the United States, 100,000 people dying a year. Cuba has a lifesaving medication that we block through our political economic blockade on Cuba. And, you know, this is controversial. We're not supposed to talk about the success of socialist regimes. So I just want to kind of speak out against that because this is, again, just an undercover topic here, but I think it's worth noting. And again, I just echo the sentiments of everyone who came before. Excellent point, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Riley, followed by Stephanie.
Good evening, everyone, working people of Orange County. I don't have a prepared speech either. I don't have quotes from the Orange County Register. I'm not an educator. I'm not a parent. But I am, but I am a student. And I would say that I was more, that I went through our public education system more recently than most people here. And I'm going to be honest, we did not talk about communism, or Marxism, or Stalinism really at all, even in our, even in our history courses. So that begs the question, why on earth are we suddenly having this push to, to crack down on something that, from my view, as someone who's gone through our education system, isn't even happening? Well, I'll put it like this. The kinds of things that this, that this proposed Policy 404 are trying to crack down on are not related to this issue at all. They have nothing to do with communism. They have nothing to do with Marxism. These are facts that I think, that I think most people are aware of, that there is an issue of systemic oppression in this country. However, the proposed 404 would not allow, would not allow students to even discuss such a thing. What I, we're, this isn't even the only place in the country where we're seeing this. There are similar policies happening in places like Florida. And I think that what needs to be said is that for the kind of people proposing these things, teaching that this country might in any way be unfair at all for anyone is in itself a manifestation of the dreaded communism. I want you to think about that. I want you to think about why the, why our elected officials, why the people who are supposed to be, who are supposed to be representing our will are so afraid of facing the truth? That there could be anything wrong with this country, that we could have any room to improve? The bill also talks about exercises in patriotism. Isn't patriotism the desire for one's country to be the best it can be? If there is room for us to improve, should we not be aware of it and seek to, and seek to move forward in that direction? I don't think the board agrees. That's all I'm going to say about that.
Thank you.
Stephanie will be followed by Penny.
Hello again, Board of Trustees. I wish Mr. Williams was here tonight to hear all the wonderful commentary about standing against this proposed Proposition 404. My name is Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Education at the LGBTQ Center OC. Incorporated in 1971, the LGBTQ Center OC remains the longstanding LGBTQ-specific organization located here in Orange County. We have been responsive to the changing and growing needs of the LGBTQ population, providing culturally appropriate and affirming health and wellness services. I am here to call on the board to put an end to Proposition, I'm sorry, Proposed Policy 404, once and for all. In particular, I would like to draw attention to an opinion piece written last month by the OC Register editorial board. Here, they point out 404's very hypocrisy. Quote, "The proposed, I'm sorry, the proposal extols Americans' free speech rights, but then would ban topics, categories, and hobble the ability of teachers to have serious discussions about civil rights, race, and gender. It is astounding to see this attempt at preventing independent and critical thinking in the classroom. Orange County students deserve access to unbiased, inclusive, and diverse education. I myself attended Capistrano Unified School District, K-12." And so this is very important to me. "Inclusive education values diversity and acknowledges the unique contributions each student brings to the classroom. In a truly inclusive setting, every student feels supported, feeling represented, and heard, as well as having a sense of belonging at school. Censorship does not belong in our classrooms. Preventing students from accessing inclusive education and books that provide factual historical perspective that they might not otherwise encounter is an injustice to education. Awareness and visibility is not indoctrination. Please put an end to Proposed Policy 404, once and for all. Otherwise, you'll probably be seeing us more often here." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Penny, followed by Joshua.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I had no intention of speaking tonight. I came to support my amazing pastor, and I had the privilege of giving the pledge. And now I'm here listening to 15 amazing speakers, and I get to just give you a little bit of piece of information about what you have been speaking about from someone's point of view who has lived in a country that falls under socialism, communism, and currently dictatorship. I was born and raised in Iran, and I was 14 years old when I moved here. I was 12 years old when I shaved my head in protest of a mandatory head cover that they make six- and seven-year-old girls wear. If you think we have prejudice here, I am so sorry to tell you that your privilege is allowing you to say that because you have no idea what it means to live under authoritarian government. And I appreciate you so much. One of you gentlemen brought up some very, very good points about some literature and some books that we should all read. But let me give you a little bit of piece of information about the state of education in California. This is edsurge.org, and it's an article that was published on August 22, 2022. I'll be more than welcome to share it with any of you. "California 4th graders trail the nation in reading, and half of its 3rd graders, including 2/3 of Black students and 61% of Latino students, do not read at grade level. Now, if you're so concerned about our minority population, including myself, why are we now advocating for better literacy programs? We are so caught up right now trying to figure out what to do that we are literally hurting our children by not providing proper education. I finished junior high in Iran. I went to high school here. I also, I went to Saddleback Valley Unified School District, Mission Viejo, graduate of Cal State Fullerton. So I kind of went through the public system. I love the public system. But when my five-year-old was in kindergarten, and it was COVID, and I actually saw what was being taught in schools, I am proudly standing in front of you as a homeschooling mom, and I will not put my kid back in any public school until we see changes. I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with 90% of what you guys said, but there is a better way of going around it. I'm not standing here supporting any policy. I'm standing here talking to you as someone who has a different background than most of you, that knows what it means not to live in a free country, not to be born a free person, to have all the privilege that we have."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. So I actually didn't know I was going to speak, but I wanted to come and support the LGBTQ community as someone who's gay Mexican. I've gone through a lot of hardship in my life. I've been called the F slur so many times in my life. I've been caught things walking down the street, holding my boyfriend's hand, being told stuff, just doing nothing. I always wished that things got better for us, and while they have sometimes, sometimes they haven't. Look at the club, what happened at the club, the shooting. Being LGBTQ, that's the second most perpetrated hate crime after being Black. The youth need to be protected. They need to understand that we're, we're getting treated like this. Whether you take away the teaching of that, people are still going to be gay, people are still going to be Black, and people are still going to walk around like that. If you're going to say we're being gay to sin, I'll remind you that the first straight couple on this world got sin. It's true. It's true. And the Bible says God is love, and we need to show more love to people. You can have your own ideas, your own beliefs, but at the end of the day, we just want to be respected, and we just want to know that our voices are heard. So thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to do consent calendar again since I went out of order, or is it okay?
You have time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to charter schools. Do we have any charter submissions, Nino?
We did have charter submissions. Let me pull out my sheet. We had three charter submissions. Oxford Preparatory Academy, Saddleback Valley submitted a material revision. California Republic Leadership Academy, Capistrano, has an appeal. And Irvine International Academy submitted a material revision.
Okay. So I'll call Teresa Johnson to the podium to facilitate the public hearing.
Good evening, President Sparks, Trustees and Superintendent. Today, the board will hold a hearing to consider public input regarding the request for a material revision to the Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley's charter school petition. On October 5, 2022, the Orange County Board of Education approved a middle school petition for Oxford Preparatory Academy. Oxford Preparatory Academy Middle School will begin operating in the 2023-2024 school year. On November 4, 2022, Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley submitted a material revision to remove grades 6 through 8 from its operating charter school effective July 1, 2023. Prior to public comments, representatives from Oxford Preparatory Academy Saddleback Valley are allotted 10 minutes to address the board. I now invite representatives from Oxford Preparatory Academy to the podium.
There's a PowerPoint in your red folders. And I'll remind the board that binders can be picked up when you leave out of your chambers, okay, for the material.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Sparks, Trustees, Superintendent Maharis, and as well as everyone who is joining us tonight. I will keep, I'll keep this pretty brief because we were just here. It seems, it seems like pretty recently, talking to you about our, our new middle school that we're very excited to be opening in the fall. And that being said, we now are coming back to remove the middle school grades from our current Saddleback Valley campus because those students will be, thanks to you all, attending our middle school in the fall. So again, this material revision really is just to pull our grades 6 through 8 off of our current charter. As you guys know, our Saddleback Valley campus is currently TK through 8th grade. So it will result in Saddleback Valley just being a TK through 5 school. And that is allowing us, kind of like we discussed when we were here before, to really focus more on what our elementary school students need and really elementary school education. And as we all, I had a middle schooler, I'm sure some of you guys have middle schoolers, they're kind of a class of their own. So it is nice to be able to give them their own campus and then be able to really focus on our elementary school students. And I have Mr. right here, he's the principal of our Saddleback Valley campus, and I know our administrators are happy to really be able to focus on those elementary school students now. So the approval, again, of our, of our middle school makes it necessary for us to come today for the material revision. So really, our requested changes are just to remove all of the language from the charter pertaining to grades 6 through 8, update our admissions preferences because we do want to make sure we do have, you know, the families who attend our schools from TK through 8th grade. And so we want to have that preference for students in the middle school for their siblings to be able to attend our elementary schools. And then remove language also. We've taken all of our business services functions in-house over the last year, and so to remove the language that was in the charter previously, referring to any back office service providers. We put that new language in the middle school charter, but this charter was approved before we did that, and so we want to make sure that everything is accurate and remove that language. And then just updated a few changes due to, due to changes in charter law that have happened since the last time we did our renewal. And so really, the impacts of the material revision are that students in 6 through 8 will be starting our middle school in 2023. Our overall projected enrollment at Saddleback Valley will decrease from 679 to 574. Again, like I said, a greater focus on middle school students and their programs, also allowing us to provide more enrichment and support opportunities for our elementary school students. So right now, they get kind of limited world language, music, those types of things because they have to share with our middle school students who take up much more of those specialty teachers' time. So this will allow us to really provide them a lot more, a lot, a lot more enrichment, a lot of different programs. And then we're also looking to lower our class size in all grade levels to be about an average of 24 to 25 to 1, so that our teachers, our students can have a lot, a lot more individualized attention. So I'm going to keep it pretty brief again because we were just here. So we do greatly appreciate the continued support and partnership that we have with Orange County Board of Education and the Orange County Department of Education, and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Teresa, yeah. She needs to rip up the...
The hearing is now open for public comments. Deputy Superintendent Boyd, are there any public comments for this agenda item?
We have none that, or do you have?
No, the card I read was mistakenly checked for number 5, I believe.
Okay. We have none for this public hearing.
This concludes the public hearing. The Orange County Board of Education, or excuse me, the Orange County Department of Education staff report will be published on January 17, 2023, and the board will take action at its February 1 meeting. President Sparks, I close the public hearing and turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, well, we can start to my right. George, Trustee Valdez, you have a question or two?
I have a question for Ms. Kernan.
Yes.
Hello again.
Hello.
So, good to see you. A couple months ago, I would characterize our interaction, you know, perhaps as a speed bump, but we got past that, so that was great. But the one thing I wanted to ask you was, at the end of that meeting, I made a request of you that, and by the way, there have been no parent complaints that have come to my emails since that meeting, so kudos to you. It seems like, you know, the issues have resolved. One of the things I did ask of you, since you're here, was in your procedure, if a parent complaint does come in, that the parent would be notified that there is a complaint procedure, and you said you would change that, as I recall. Have you done that?
We do. We have it posted in multiple places on our website. We have also communicated that out to parents. So there is different places where parents can go and find out what the complaint procedures are. There's a form that parents can fill out, not just for uniform complaints or Williams complaints, but just general, general complaints, as well as all the different people that they can go to if they have complaints, as well as different, you know, who's in charge of, of different things that they can go to.
I just think a parent should be notified if there is going to be a complaint about curriculum or whatever, that they be told that there is a complaint procedure. So it sounds like you've done that? Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Shaw, do you have any questions? Trustee Barky? And I don't really have any questions, but kudos to everything. I have, I have kind of a question, I guess. So given the restructuring and the, I know you've given a lot of thought to it, what do you think is the most exciting thing that you're looking forward to because of this? And what is the most challenging thing?
Well, there's tons of exciting things that are happening. We've had a few parent town halls, and those have, we've had, you know, great questions from our parents, a lot of feedback from our parents. We're currently doing our, our strategic planning and LCAP surveys, and we have a section on the middle school for those parents getting ready to send their students to the middle school. We also give it to all of, to our students in grades 5 through 8 and our staff members. So we're really looking forward and excited to continue to get that feedback and do all of that. Now we're kind of down to the logistics plannings of, you know, bell schedules and electives and, and pre-CT pathways and things like that. So it's kind of the fun, exciting planning part. I would say that probably, right at this moment, we're still working on our Prop 39 facilities request. So in every single meeting, the first question is, well, where's the site? And every time we have to say, well, we don't quite know yet, but it's probably here or there, you know, so, so really just kind of looking forward to finding out where that, where that school site will be so we can do some more specific facilities planning and, and things like that. So, but overall, super, super excited and just looking forward to, to starting a new adventure.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for your hard work, and we look forward to seeing you back in February.
Yes. We just like to keep...
That sort of, sort of begs a different question now.
Oh, okay.
Well, you're, you're asking to change the charter, but you don't even have a site yet in, identified.
So we turned in a Prop 39 facilities request, and based on that timeline, the district has until February 1 to give us our exact site location. So they have to give us a site that accommodates our projection of students, but they don't need to tell us exactly where that is until, until February.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you all for your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on then to Board Recommendations, item number 6. I got to get my glasses here. To approve the board date change from April 5 to April 12, which was put forth by a board member. Do we have a motion?
Was that because of some type of holiday?
Conflict. Mary, we can't hear you, because...
Yes, it is a holiday.
Your mic's off.
What's that?
Your mic's off.
Yes, it is a holiday. It's a Jewish holiday.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes 4 to 0. And now we'll move on to item number 7, which is taking board action on board policy regarding the Orange County Board of Education professional development.
I think I just saw one typo. Sorry. My binder got stuck. So if I was looking at that, right at the very end, there's a Y.
A Y, yeah.
Was there, that was just inadvertent?
Very end of what?
Page 51 of our board packet, under ratification and reporting, it says, "In the professional development, Y shall publicly report." I think it's, that was just a typo there, I assume.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I see another one that we'll correct also.
Okay. So do we have a motion with that friendly amendment for the correction?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, passes 4 to 0. And that brings us to item number 8. Approving revision to the annual budget in excess of $25,000 as per...
President Sparks, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we just want to clarify who moved and seconded that.
I moved it.
Mary moved it. And George. Thank you.
Or was it you?
It was Tim.
Oh, it was Tim.
Tim.
Sorry.
I had George for the one before, so that's...
Okay. Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Moving to number 8, item number 8, approve revision to the annual budget in excess of $25,000 as per Education Code Section 1280. This revision has been included in the first interim report that is certified positive by the county superintendent of schools. Any motion?
A motion to discuss or a motion to approve?
Whichever you guys want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion so we can discuss it.
Okay, motion to discuss. Any discussion, questions around item number 8?
I'll second.
Oh, I think, I think we're discussing right now. Oh.
The motion was to discuss it, approve, but you have to...
Oh, right, motions.
To discuss it.
We didn't get a second, though, did we?
Tim.
Oh, Tim, okay, second, and now we're going to discuss. Second, and now we're gonna discuss. Okay. So, anyone like to jump in to discuss, ask questions? Of the interim report?
I'll, I'll ask Renee a question. Right, at the, under the summary on page B2, just looking at what was budgeted and versus, you know, or the adopted budget versus the interim budget, and I kind of glanced down the variance to see.
What page you want?
I'm sorry, right at the beginning.
B2.
B2.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Just kind of the, the high level view, I guess, you know, seeing where we varied. It, it did seem that the certificated, the, the first two object code lines, certificated salaries and classified salaries, did seem to, I mean, maybe in a percentage term, wasn't a large variance, but dollar amount, I mean, certificated salaries had a $1.1 million variance, and classified salaries, $4.1 million. Was, was this an updated collective bargaining agreement or something like that?
Yes. If you remember, at the last meeting, we discussed that we had settled with both groups. So, that includes all groups and the management team settlements are included now.
So, that's where that got reflected? Okay.
And so, these are just your changes over $25,000? If you go to page, under the tab, this is number two assumptions. It gives you more detail for each of the different areas. So, you can see for the, say, certificated salaries, it may include this cost of settlement also has some savings for us for positions that haven't been filled and things like that. So, you, you kind of tie the two together.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Valdez, do you have a question?
I do. Renee, I've been contacted by quite a few people over the past month regarding equity and OC social determinants of health implementation grant. Can you tell me where in the budget that is listed?
It is not included in this budget.
So, it's just not in the?
Well, it hasn't, it, the time that this budget was completed, we hadn't had a grant award for that, so it's not included in here.
Is it, are grants normally included in?
We only include contracts and grants that, once we have the final approval for those. We don't include them in the budget until then.
So, when, when would it be included then? In March?
In March, or I would bring you an update normally in the next month. So, I've been trying to give you updates on a monthly basis of new items. So, but the next interim budget is, yes, March 15th, by March 15th.
Are you familiar with the grant in particular that I'm speaking of?
I am not as familiar with that grant. I probably have somebody else who could speak to it.
Are there any, is there any staff member here that's familiar with it?
A couple of us. Depending on what the question, we can bring the right person up.
Right.
Okay. So, the, the, the grant is over a half million dollars. I believe it's $507,000, $507,000 payable in three installments, and it's for well spaces, a catalyst for equitable access for students. I have been approached by constituents of mine that are concerned that the grant is being spent on gender-affirming counseling and puberty blockers being performed in school. And I don't know if any of that's true or not.
That would be inaccurate.
That is inaccurate. I'm Christine Olstead, the Chief Academic Officer of Orange County Department of Education, and hello, and oversee the well space project. And so, we have actually opened 19 well spaces across Orange County. None of them are doing gender, anything in the well spaces. And so, really what they are, they're calming centers for students when they need to deescalate.
They're what, Christine?
Calming centers. And so, when a student has a lot of anxiety or needs a timeout, they can go to a space where there's usually a school counselor staffed in that space, and they can take a break, they can speak to the school counselor, and just have kind of some time to kind of come back to regulation and then go back to the classroom. There's opportunities for them to do some, like, mindful coloring, or work with some sand art, or some art therapy and things like that. So, it's a therapeutic setting that's being opened for students. And so, we got a grant from the healthcare agency to open more well spaces across Orange County.
Okay. Well, that, I mean, that's completely different from, just for the record, that is completely different from what I was, from what I was told, so.
Yeah.
And that doesn't sound, you know, problematic to me at all. Are there any documents on the grant, like the application or, or anything else?
Yeah, we have the grant application.
Is there any document out there on how the money is being spent?
The whole grant identifies how we'll be spending the money. It's to buy, it's to buy furniture and materials to go into the well spaces.
Like I said, none of that sounds problematic to me.
No. And we have examples, if you wanted to go visit, some of them across Orange County.
Is there any document that, that the department has on how the money is being spent?
Yeah, our whole grant document outlines how the money will be spent.
Can, can we put that on the agenda for January then? Can we put that?
Put what on the agenda?
Just the.
Just the Equity OC?
The proposal?
I can furnish you all a copy of the grant, the board members, I can send that to you tomorrow so that you could see it, and then you can determine what it is that you want on the agenda, because I'm not sure what it is that you're.
Nine, is that, is that something, if we would get a question, because I get a lot of random questions on things, is that something we could share with whomever is emailing us about that?
Certainly.
It's public document.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Or you can, I mean, and as you've done in the past, you can forward those questions. I can give you the answer or, or the information, or if you want to hand them off, because, you know, in some cases, you've done that, then we certainly will do that also.
Yeah, I do like to do that.
But I can forward you a copy of the Equity OC grant documents tomorrow morning when we come to the office, so that you can take a look.
Documents, the proposal, as well as the, the allocation of where the, where the budget for the proposal is, well.
Well, it's, it's in the.
Yes, in the document. Okay. Perfect.
Like I said, I've, I've been contacted by quite a few people in the last month.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of misinformation out there about what a well space is, and so we do have all that documentation on what it is and what we're doing with the well space and, in helping our schools.
And we actually were planning to do a staff update to the board in January to show our well space. We have one at Sunburst Academy, and Ian and his staff have gone out and done a video, and we have some information from the cadre as well as students related to usage and so forth. So, I think that might be helpful, so you'd have a visual, and so we would be sharing that with the board under our information discussion item next month.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly helps, the more information we have, the better, so we can have that information, so we can send out the right messaging when people, when the constituents are asking questions.
Absolutely, because it's a wonderful project that I think you all would be very proud of to support, because it is helping with, you know, social, emotional learning, just, you know, de-escalation techniques, things like that, a lot of the behaviors we're seeing post-pandemic. We have a lot of maladaptive behaviors happening in classrooms.
I think what happens is, you know, perhaps a few people out there sort of get an idea of what's going on, and then, I don't know about you guys, but they contact me for sure.
Right.
And, you know, ask me to do something about it or investigate it, and then, you know, you're telling me that this is substantially different from what I'm being told. So, I'm just trying to figure out what it is that is, that's going on, but I.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Any other questions before? No? Okay. Perfect.
I would just add that anytime you all get questions, please email us, because we'd like to also give you information sooner than later, so that, you know, it doesn't start being something that might be a wildfire, or that potentially you can, you know, get the information to individuals quicker, so.
Yeah, and that's why, from the beginning, from four years ago, we've been interested in, in the content of a lot of these grants, so that, so that we know what's coming down the pike, so that we can be informed in terms of when questions come to us. So, yeah, so we appreciate that information. All right. Any other questions related to the, this interim budget before us?
And you all will recall, first interim, second interim, they have requirements in terms of dates that they have to, documents have to be into the state. So, since the board meeting was moved from last week to this week, Renee's actually required to get the state reporting completed by tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So, the 15th is the deadline.
Okay. So, I just have one additional question that I know you've, we've touched on a few times, but if you could just explain sort of one last time. I noticed this, for the increases over $25,000, the variance of the MTSS was seven and a half million, it looks like.
Yes.
Could you just explain that?
So, because we had more grant funds, you know, it was, we received the money in 2020, 2021, to be spent over five years, and so, this is the fifth year, so we were putting more money in to spend out the grants, so the expenditures are going. It's mostly passed through to school districts.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great.
One of the things I guess to add in here, too, the two of the new grants I had shared with, or entitlements from the state that I'd shared with you, I think, the month before last, from the governor's budget, it's the Arts and Music Block Grant and the Learning Recovery Block Grant. We have recognized the revenue in the budget, but we are not putting expenditures in there yet, and I am, I am anticipating that we will not this year, because it's the same purpose of dollars as all of our federal funds, which have an expiration date of 2023. So, we're gonna spend those first, and then we would come forward with a plan for the others, and so, but since we did receive the funding, I have to recognize it as revenue.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. I'm okay with moving forward if I have a motion to approve the revision to the annual budget in excess of $25,000 for item number eight.
So, move?
Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So, you can get busy for tomorrow's deadline.
Off she goes.
All right. I'd like to start, or do we have any communication information or discussion before we go into announcements? Tim, do you have anything to report on that? Trustee Shaw?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Am I supposed to?
I don't know.
Am I in trouble?
I thought, no. I thought you were on this communication.
Oh, well.
Committee or whatever.
I know that many of us, I don't know if, have all of, all the board members had their, I know a few of us.
Only two of the five have done their videos, so we do need the rest of the board members, too, and Daru will follow up with the three remaining, so that we can get that done. Our target date was to have that completed by this month, so that the media staff could clean them up and have them posted by January. Still like to be able to get them posted by January, because the intent is to post them all at the same time. So, we'll work with you all on your dates, but if we can try to get two done on the same date, or if we can get them all done on the same date.
December is a much better time for me than November was.
Well, and they're amazingly quick. I mean, I came here, like, I put an hour in my calendar, and I think it was out in, like, four minutes or something, so it's, you don't have to.
Well, you must be really good.
I don't know, maybe it was seven, it was very quick, so it's nothing you have.
They didn't have to keep doing double takes on you.
No, no. I think, I think just the first time, like, I didn't say my district, and then second time, poof, and it was very quick.
So, we got one take, Mary.
Well, and I'm always, you know, less is more, so.
Right. Exactly. All right. So, we'll work with you after the meeting to schedule in December. Okay. Let's move on to announcements, starting with the superintendent.
Okay. Well, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's great to be with you this evening, as always. Just wanted to call your attention to a few things, and Mr. Valdez, thank you, Trustee Valdez, for bringing that to us in terms of that grant coming from the Orange County Healthcare Agency. So, it's coming right from, through the Board of Supervisors, Healthcare Agency, to us, designed to serve the students and families of our great county. And somebody reacted to the word cadre. They said, "Why are you using the word cadre?" They told somebody who had got to my desk. Well, in Sunburst, that's, it's a military term, and it's, and Sunburst uses that word all the time, and it just means commissioned officers who are involved in training. Who's training people? And so, cadre is used often. But there was almost like an implication that we were now bringing in these terms that were subverting the system, and so, anytime something comes up, let us know. There, some people have a problem with the word equity. Well, that's a term that came out of the county, they identified the grant that way, and so, we're using the, the terminology that was established by those who are providing the funding. So, and, but, but we'll talk more, and we, as Nine has said, we were, definitely wanted to bring that to your attention through a, through a presentation that we'll make next month. Okay. So, just a couple of quick things that I wanted to bring to your attention. First of all, we just celebrated Native American Heritage Month, and we're trying to space, spend time really examining the Native American students in our county. We do not have a large number, but we do have Native American students in our county. Often, they have Spanish surnames, so they blend in with the Hispanic culture. I should say the Mexican-American culture, to be more specific, but they have a very distinct culture, as you know, even a, a different language in many cases. And, and there's often a plurality and a mixture of both cultures that have been blended as well. So, we had two speakers, and, and it's all, we, we did a, we did a video conference, and all this stuff is accessible to you if you care to look at it. There was a time, and I think that the numbers still hold true, that the, the highest dropout rate was with Native American students, you know, that were living on a reservation and just not completing high school education, and so, and the needs of Native American students unfortunately are so pronounced that we're doing everything we can to be sensitive to them. So, but we did have these speakers, Pamela Goyo, who is the, who is the Director and Special Assistant to the President for American Indian Affairs, University of New Mexico, Domingo Bellardis, who lives right here in our very county, he's the President and Curator of the Blas Ogular Adobe Museum Foundation and the Hoshemun Culture Center here. And then, we heard from Dr. Crystal Martinez Alary, who's Board President of the Elk Grove Unified School District, and she's a member of the Lone Ben of Miwok Indians, and they did a great presentation, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. On the 28th, we also were involved in saluting the Mendez family and the city of Westminster, along with Orange County Department of Education, we've been involved in the creation of a tribute for the family. So, if you haven't seen this, I'd encourage you to go to Westminster, and you can see that the sculptor really did a beautiful job of the Mendez family, and now Westminster's wants to be like a destination city for people who want to know more about, basically the first case that made it through the courts and denounced separate but equal, the doctrine of separate but equal, that ultimately went up to the Supreme Court. Thurgood Marshall was one of the attorneys that helped fight that lawsuit here, and took a lot of the archive of the suit itself, and then converted it into Brown versus Board of Education, which pretty much denounced separate but equal across the country, not just in California. But really, that, when you think of the, like, the seminal work, a little seed that was planted, it was so profound, because when separate but equal was knocked out of the schools, it knocked it out of housing, employment, the right, women's rights, and so many things went away with that one move. And all started here in Orange County. Kind of hard to believe that Plessy versus Ferguson, which was the Supreme Court case that said separate but equal was okay. It's kind of hard to believe that the United States Supreme Court, for 11 years, I think it was 11 years, actually allowed that to stand. Yeah. Yeah. Right. So, but we were, we are helping in terms of being docents and populating the story and building curriculum around this for not only the city of Westminster, but for all of our districts in the county. and building curriculum around this for not only the city of Westminster, but for all of our districts in the county. Uh, thank you for going. Mr. Shaw appeared, uh, went to our Sunburst graduation on the eighth at Mariners Church, and Tim, thank you for being there. We appreciate it when the board shows up for these events and anything that you see that pops out on Newsroom or things that we're doing and you want to be a part of that, um, let us know. The, um, I wanted to commend our crisis response team. We have a crisis response network and Christine Olmstead, Dr. Olmstead is, uh, the head of that. And, um, we provided services for Fountain Valley Unified School District at the death of one of their principals that was, um, widely publicized. I mean, it basically cascaded through the country when something like that happens, Disneyland no less. So, the, uh, the act occurred on a Saturday night and by the next day, Sunday, we were meeting with the, uh, district officials. We were meeting with the superintendent and cabinet to figure out a way to deal with this crisis because that next Monday, you know, it's a problem, these things happen, and guess what? The next day happens too. You, you can't hide from it, you can't run from it, you have to confront it. So, um, we have a team of clinicians who go to the school site. And the district was very complimentary of our folks because they, they were, nobody's expecting this, right? So suddenly, principal, um, commits an act of suicide and whose children go to the same district. And, and, and you, you could, you want to immediately get sucked into the nuances of this, but you have to remember that, that there's so much of this that can't be, it's inexplicable because of the human mind. People who get into crisis and the body breaks down and people don't perceive reality, you know, as they maybe should. Not in every case, but in this case, I think that happened. Very popular person in that school district. And, um, so we were there, we also have comfort dogs we bring. And, um, we put on a webinar for parents that wanted to know more details and what the district was doing to avert any kind of a, of a negative reaction that would affect the classroom and their students. So we did everything we can, just could, to support the district, and I just thought they did a phenomenal job. So I want to thank Christine Olmstead and our, uh, Crisis Response Network for the great work they do. And so we, we do all that work when, when there's ever a problem. And frequently we find ourselves at schools because of the death of somebody, or, or it could be something, not necessarily the death, but a crisis occurs sometime. I also wanted to let you know that we did our ninth annual OC Pathways Showcase. And, um, so I want to thank Kathy Boyd, Dr. Olmstead, Kathy Boyd, and Nadia Kodadi, who, who's, did a great job. It was, uh, done virtually. And this is what, uh, we do to celebrate career technical education, um, and how that has been revolutionized. The, many people think of the ROP model, Regional Occupational Center model. And, um, what, what we have here is we have students who are, um, in AP classes, taking career tech classes as well. Because that's how the world has been flattened, you know, through technology. And, um, I mean, we all, people who drive electric cars, they can't find enough people to fix those cars. And it could take months to get your car fixed, if you have an electric car. So there's a niche, right, that somebody can go into who has the mind to understand that type of technology. They're, they're taking advanced placement courses, they're graduating from high school, going on to very prestigious universities. And at the same time, they're learning career technical education, and we used to bifurcate that, you know, like, like some nations do. They say, you know, some of you are going into the professions because of these high test scores. The others are going into the vocations, and the two are different. Japan right now is trying to take those students because of a declining birth rate. They don't have enough people that are going to be engineers, so they're taking kid, people that historically have gone into the vocations and redirecting them back into the professions. And, um, following a model that we use here in the United States, and it's to really make sure that they have the labor demands of their nation covered by their people as opposed to importing, you know, people who import all the time, right? And there's nothing wrong with that. You know, I'm not casting blame there. We have immigrants who come here on an H-1B visa to work in the United States for a short period of time, then they return to their country. But the fact is that we need to have our own people step up and take those jobs, I believe, you know. Yes, we can use, I mean, Bill Gates even said, "Don't stop the H-1B visas or that's going to hurt, you know, the American economy." So that's, that's, that's a viable thing that the Congress does. But, but how much better, I think, to train our kids to be taking these jobs, high-paying jobs. So I wanted to just commend our people. We've been recognized across the country for our OC pathways, and we did a showcase, and it was phenomenal. So that's all I have under my reports today, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, Deputy Superintendent, Naina, do you have any comments?
Yes, I, just as a reminder, the next board meeting is Wednesday, January fourth. And, uh, submission deadline is actually Friday, December sixteenth. Uh, we talked about a compressed schedule to, so we're already started working on the agenda so that we can, uh, meet with the Executive Committee on Monday. Wanted to let you know that board packets are going to be delivered early to board members, so you will be getting your board packets delivered on December twenty-second. And the office will be closed on December twenty-third, December twenty-sixth, December thirtieth, and January second. Because the Christmas holiday, as well as New Year's falls on a weekend, then, um, collective bargaining agreements, uh, and, and holiday schedule is the Friday and the Monday.
So you'll be out of pocket basically the twenty-second until we meet, until the third or something?
Right, and we'll come back to the office on the third.
Okay.
And, uh, board meeting's the next day.
Okay. So I know if I need to bug you.
Yeah, and, and Daru and I will be, uh, on vacation the week of, uh, the twenty-sixth, right after Christmas holiday. So that week, we won't be in the office. I will monitor emails just in case something comes up, just, um, you know, I will be.
Don't worry.
Biggest of emergencies for me to do that.
Yeah, don't worry.
And I solely appreciate that. But just, I mean, we never know, things happen, and so, you know, it's part of what we do, right? Dr. Maharish, so from that standpoint, we'll make sure that if there's something that the board needs, we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
Wonderful.
I also wanted to, um, just remind you, I stated earlier, but you actually have three binders, uh, in chambers for the submissions that we received. And I want to make sure that you remember to take those tonight. If for some reason you forget those, then we'll get them delivered to you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll finish up with legislative updates, committee report, and board member comments. But then we're going to have to go back into closed session for not too long of a time before I come out and close out the, the meeting. Just, just so you know what's coming down the pike. So do we have any legislative updates from any board members? No? Okay, how about any committee reports? Okay, I would like to make a board comment.
Make one comment, and I do want to let you know now, you'll know sooner than, but Dr. Olmstead is going to be leaving us. She's just been appointed as an Assistant Superintendent of the Vista School District, which is here in San Diego, and it's a large district, and she'll be the number two person, uh, reporting directly to the superintendent. And I just wanted to commend her for all the work that she's done in our, in our company.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, we were just getting used to all of your wonderful reports. So I'd like to just take a moment to, uh, to recognize our, our, uh, dear member of the board family who's going through a tough time, a very rough time, and wouldn't want the troubles broadcast. But I think if we just take a moment to recall and remember, um, and bless the sanctity of life and the love of a child, I think that would be an honorable thing to do. So just, if we could take ten seconds or so for that. Okay, I appreciate you all, um, listening to that. Any other board comments?
I have a few.
Go for it.
So, um, just wanted to mention that, uh, I continue to go out into, um, my district. I did have a meeting with, uh, charter school leaders on December second, which was fantastic. I was invited to a party at College Prep and I showed up there for their, uh, December, uh, party, and that was very nice to see, uh, on December ninth. I know we don't get an opportunity to comment on the public comments, but I, I figured this is my only opportunity to do that at the end. I, I think at some point we should change this, so maybe we can say something at the end of the public comments, so, because a, a bunch of the people have left. But, um, uh, um, there was a comment tonight about, um, California schools in general. And I, I, I really think that's something that the record needs to be clear because, um, thanks to my, um, conversations with, uh, Dr. Olmstead and some of the reports she gave me, uh, Orange County does much better than California overall, folks. We are not at the bottom of this nation with respect to reading and writing. We are doing much, much better than that, and I, I would encourage you to contact the department for the statistics, uh, in that regard. So, so, uh, I take a little umbrage when we sort of get, when Orange County sort of gets floated into all of California, and I just wanted to correct that. There were a lot of comments tonight about, um, Dr. Williams, and I, and I really wish he was here, and if, if it wasn't for that health crisis in his family, I'm sure he would be. But as far as, uh, the proposed, uh, Board Policy four hundred and four, I, I think the public should be aware that any board member can bring up, uh, a policy, uh, in any given month. So, um, we are not empowered to simply strike something down. I know, I know that that policy is currently on, on the ta, uh, was tabled. But for purposes of the public, um, when it was raised by Dr. Williams, I know I seconded it for purposes of discussion, and, um, then he called for a vote, as I recall, and there were no other trustees, uh, that voted in favor, so you can take, you can take that for what, for what it's worth. There was a comment tonight about a lawsuit at OCSA, which I'd like to speak with somebody about. The allegations that were made are very serious. I take them very seriously, particularly because they are in Santa Ana in my district. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Valdez. Trustee Shaw, do you have anything to add?
I was just going to, um, thank everyone for inviting me and, and including me at the Sunburst Youth Academy graduation. It was a lot of fun. My, that is not a quiet group of graduates. My ears are still, uh, you know, ringing here, but, uh, they bring quite a bit of enthusiasm, obviously, and, um, it's obvi, you know, just hearing from the students and their experience, it's obviously really a life-changing event, I think, for those young people. It's very exciting to, uh, to be part of there. So I've just been sitting here thinking of a way to sabotage Christine's new job. Not sure if I'll be successful at that, but I'm, we've been trying. Well, I'm, I'm sick about the idea of losing you, but, uh, happy for you. You've been such a joy, so that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Barky.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we'll go to closed session. Hopefully we won't be there too long, and then we'll come out and close out the meeting. Thank you all so much for attending. Okay, we're back from closed session. Welcome back where we wrap up this meeting. It might be a record for us. So we're going to have our good counsel, Jonathan Brenner, report out closed session.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Maharas, good to be with you this evening. This is the report out for closed sessions one through four. On item number one, a discussion was held between the board members and council. No action was taken. I should note that at closed session, Trustee Williams was not present. Every other board member was. For items two through four, a discussion was held with council. No action was taken other than with respect to Epstein Becker's invoices. And the board approved those invoices four to zero. All of the four members voting in favor who are present. And those invoices are all dated November 30. Number 1103527, 1103528, and 1103529. And that's the report out for the closed session. Thank you.